All right, good evening. I would like to call the annual meeting for the School District of North Fondleak to order. So, if you'd like to roll call?
No.
Okay.
But I'd make a motion to have Pete Chisen be the chairperson for the annual meeting.
I'll sit in.
All right. Seconded to appoint myself as the chairperson of the meeting. Any further questions or discussion? Are there volunteers? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is to elect a person to act as clerk. I would nominate that our... Oh, issues here. Oh, oh issues here. Just piling again. All right. Minutes of the last annual meeting were distributed, and I'll just send those out to folks here. Unless anyone has any comments or corrections, those who stand approved this, they were public. Item number five is presentation and adoption of the school board budget.
All right. Well, thank you. Chisen, at this time, what I'll do is, you'll see, I'll go through, I'll be going through the slideshow, that are the slide presentation that Maria has put together. There has been a few changes since this was put together, but Maria will bring it forward. As was presented and also published, and then any adjustments will be made by next week, Monday, when the board will officially adopt the levy and the budget for the 2018-19 school year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Maria Putzer, and thank her in advance for all of her hard work and diligence on putting together this information.
Can I come over here?
Well, if you guys want to look and see, if you wouldn't mind, I can be here, and I'll go through this for you. So if you want to be kind of in the middle, with this sound over here.
Sure, sure. How about I'll go right there where I was, and I'll try to project this way. So just let me know if you can't hear above the little register over there.
Can't turn it off. I did, but with HVAC, they turned the turning it off part off. Oh, okay.
Okay. Is that not, can you hear you? How? Okay. All right. I've added some things from our last annual meeting. There's quite a bit of narrative in here because I'm trying to make this kind of a one-stop shop. We'll put this on our website, and this will be a document that, you know, we can hand out if community members, or staff, or parents want a little bit more information about what the annual meeting stands. So I'm not going to go through and read all of this. You guys can read it, and hopefully you can have a chance to look it over, but feel free to stop me anytime as I go through. So I'm going to play through unless you stop me. This is our vision, working together for the success of all of us throughout our buildings. Our mission, every child graduates life, career, and college ready. And these are our goals. Those are also in Erin's letter at the beginning of your packet. Members of the Board of Education, and now our treasurer, will be able to fill that in for next year. Welcome to the... Our district, our administrative staff, both the district administration and the school administration, so anybody has can look right in here and get to where they need to be. Our explanation of funds, as we go through the numbers, this will become more important, especially to our newer people here. This is the project, the budget process overview. This is a very simplistic overview. Right now, we're at, obviously, equalization aid, which was certified this morning at 10:00 a.m. So that's why our numbers are changing a little bit, which we will finalize at the budget adoption hearing on Monday. So it gives us a week to tweak our numbers and then get those back to approval. And that's just, that's it. These are the main changes after the 10-5 publication. This was after the budget was published in the Fondleak recorder on the 5th. We found out that equalization aid was coming today. That number is $9,748,445, which is down 60, just over $63,000 from what was budgeted.
What we projected.
What we projected.
And remember, that doesn't impact, it just changes the levy.
We also had a change in FTE, which resulted in a deficit. If you remember, last month, our deficit was projected to be about $280,000 negative. Then with the information that you have in front of you with that FTE number in there, it looked like it was going to be $16,000 deficit. It's back up to $120,000 deficit with the latest FTE numbers that we got. So from the 1,338 that's in the PowerPoint that you have in front of you, it's actually 1,304 as of today.
That's full-time equivalent. Correct.
Yes.
Largest drop from that was summer school, and there was an error that we looked at when we were calculating 4K. We forgot to take them as two-thirds of a person instead of the full, so that's why the drop in FTE.
That was my error. 14 of those can still were the drop from summer school. So we should be able to bring that back definitely, bring summer school back in. Okay. This is just, this column, why revenue limits came into effect. They became effective in 1993. And why is our revenue limit so important? It's important because that is what dictates what we can spend. And 75% of that is our revenue limit that is due to taxes that we levy and state aid. The other 25% is what we raise on our own. So it's grants, it is open enrollment, it is anything, you know, fees that we charge. So that's that other 25%, but most of it is from taxes and aid. And this is how equalization aid is. These are the factors that make up equalization aid. So as our revenue limit is made up of tax levy and equalization aid, so if equalization aid goes up, our tax levy would go down, and then vice versa. And this is a picture of our equalization aid versus our FTE historically. Kind of been up and down, but now we are trending up with our FTE, and that's that orange line. We just had that dip this year. But our equalized value is also going up. So why this is important is if this trend were to continue where our FTE was going to be decreasing and our property values would be increasing, that's more property value per FTE, which would mean higher taxes and lower equalization aid, because we would be considered more property wealthy.
AKA, Green Lake now gets zero state aid after the shift.
Right.
They were only getting very minimal, but now they get zero after the shift.
The Gibraltar's, they get zero. They're all tax levy. This is just the history of our equalization aid. We're up about $2 million in the last five years, which is awesome. That just means that our tax levy then can decrease because our aid is increasing. And this is the ratio of equalized aid and tax levy that make up our revenue limit. So before I go into head count, are there any questions so far? I know I'm going really fast. Okay, so our head count this year is up about 20, 25 kids. 27 kids. So that would include our open-enrolled kids in as well as our resident kids. Our FTE, however, those are just our resident kids. Those have gone down 14 from last year, down to 13 before. And like I said before, 11 of that is just from summer school.
And just sometime, you're going to see our enrollments up even though our FTEs. Why that's important is when you have an FTE, that's where you get to levy the full amount for that child. When it's open enrolled, it's easier, it's either the $7,000-ish for a regular or $12,000 for special ed. So that's where those numbers look different, but within all Maria's information and data, that's how it all gets put together. So we also have seen that we've had families, seen an increase in families that are moving out of the district just because there isn't housing for the houses that they want, but still then open enroll their kids in. So they then turn from an FTE to an open-enrolled student. But the key thing here, as you can see, we continue to serve more students, and then our, we will have the 1,299 drops off this year because it's a rolling three-year average.
One more, please. Oh, is that one?
So just so I have it straight in my head. So we still are, we still have more kids that we're serving.
Yes.
But the actual, that are living in our district are less.
Kind of. The FTE, we have more 4K too, but you don't count 4K as a full FTE.
Okay.
So we're about, we have, we haven't lost students in our district. What we've lost is the, since our summer school is down, for every hour we have a kid here, there's an equation that we get that, plus our 4K, we don't count them as full students, and we have our largest 4K that we've ever had. So I would say as far as our resident students go, we're relatively the same, but for accounting purposes, we're down. But with open enrollment, this, we'll see in a little bit, we're quite a bit up again. And that's even with closing open enrollment.
Our 4Ks are probably at 60%.
About the 4K, the first thing?
They were...
Close to 90?
Maybe something, yeah. This shows the open enrolled in versus out. So we have 303 coming in as of Friday, and 179 going out. So the good news there is, well, we're up a couple in the open enrolled coming in, but we're down significantly in the ones in the district. And there's our net gain loss of students, 124. And then that, that is really exciting. Our revenue is almost $1 million, which in open enrollment, and that's a combination of special ed and regular ed students.
So as you can see, since '06, '07, we've actually gone and went from a $230,000 deficit to paying more money out than getting in for students, to now we bring in almost $1 million because of students that we serve. And that money helps to not only serve the students that are coming in on open enrollment, it also helps us offset some costs with our resident students too. And remember, this is with shutting down, I believe, four grade levels, and having very limited open enrollment because of the lack of space, which will be alleviated with the new construction.
No special ed open enrollment, just open enrollment for special ed.
It's been a couple of years, it's been...
Right. Okay. Any questions so far? Okay. This is what makes up our tax levy. It's three buckets. Well, it's one bucket, but it's three different elements in that bucket. One is the Fund 10 and Fund 38. 38 is the non-referendum debt levy, so that is the $1 million that we can borrow outside of the rev, or inside the revenue limit. And that's almost paid off, that Fund 38. Fund 39 is our referendum debt levy, and community service, that's our Fund 80 that we talked about. And then here is our mill rate history. And what we are recommending is just a drop of a penny in 2018-19 from $10.27 to $10.26. Just a little review, in 2012-13, we were at 986, and then dropped. And then we talked about, and you approved for us to maintain our tax levy at 964. We knew that we were going to have this referendum coming up, and wanted to really stabilize that, that mill rate for our community members. So that's what we're kind of thinking now going into the future. We're anticipating we're going to need another referendum.
Or, or also, when we have revenue cap, for the first time in the past eight years, the revenue limits are going to increase. That was part of the last budget. So now, anybody who spends in the state less than $9,400 on the revenue limit, this year can go up to $9,400. We're at about $9,437, $9,440. Next year, we'll be able to go up to $9,500, $9,600, $9,700. So along with categorical aid, the revenue limit is going to start to decline, and what our recommendation is, is Maria, if we would just do the revenue limit and that over levy in order to pay off debt sooner, to create that flexibility, what would the right, what would the mill rate go down to?
Uh, $9.30.
So it gives flexibility for, we were up $800,000 and revenue, or in aid this year. There's been years where we were down, you know, 250. So it allows for that cushion too, and also to pay off debt sooner.
We just did some, this is older information, this is from '17, '18. Obviously, '18, '19 is not yet, but this is our mill rate comparable to some of the districts around us. It doesn't say where I pulled the information from, which is an DPI. It does not say if these, when these other districts who have gone to referendum, or if they have gone to referendum. So it's hard to compare apples to apples. We just went, which is why ours is now at 1027, otherwise we would have been up toward the Ashgash area, or, you know, in that, in that ballpark. So, but it does give you an idea of where districts are in our area.
Now, that's a real apples-to-apples comparison, because each district gets to their mill rate through different means, right? Having, you know, different aids and different...
Sure.
And remember, this is kind of relative. Yeah, this mill rate isn't accurate for all the municipalities. So...
This is the average?
This is the average mill rate. So, I mean, the village, like, Maria will go through the village of North Fondleak's valuation went down 10%, where the town of Friendship went up a little bit, the town of Fondleak went way up. So this is the average, where you'll see, I call this the Mark Flood Rule of 2009, when Mark Flood at the, from the mobile homes, from Flood Homes. Their taxes went up when we said that we were going to have about a stable, well, it's because of the value of friendship property went up at such a value, so then that municipality had more responsibility when it all got distributed. That's why it was such a big deal with equalized values coming out last Friday. So this is an average, but once again, this too can change and go up and down. We'll set it, but there's going to be some things that'll impact it a little bit by next week.
And we maximize our resources. There are other, I don't remember if it's Fondleak that does not?
Campbell's Court. Campbell's Court under levy is about $1.5 million a year.
So, like I said, it is hard to do a real apples-to-apples, but it does give you an idea, because the community members tend to see mill rate. So if they're asking, you know, where we stand with relationship to our neighbors, that's where we're at. And then this compares us to the state. The red line is the state, and then the blue line is us. So last year, for the first time, I think, ever, we were above the state in mill rate. The state average was at 979, and our district was at 1027. But again, we don't know in the state which ones went to referendum, which ones were in the process of going to referendum. So, but it does give you just an idea of where we are compared to the state. This is the slide that Erin was kind of hitting on. Last year, our total equalized value was just over $507 million, and this year, it jumped 3.54% to $525, over $525 million. And then this will show you of that equal, of the total equalized value, where all our municipalities are, what percentage they make up. Any questions on that at all? If you ever have need help explaining that?
Sorry, could you go back? Two slides to that one, those early, one, go forward a little more. No, that's not, keep going.
Oh, the other one?
The one with the state.
Oh.
That's one?
Yeah, yeah, that's one. But back, like, in the early 90s, with the mill rate up over $18, that did mean we were spending twice as much as we were, or we are now. That, you know, there's reassessments in there that changes the equalized value in different districts in our district and stuff, and then that mill rate moves based on things like that also, so, okay.
But you'll see this stabilized since '93. That's when the revenue limits came in. That's where things really started to become fixed at that time, and that's where you can see almost like a, the trend of the close to straight line over the next two decades that plus almost.
And then this shows our debt payments. As I said before, the blue bars are non-referendum debt, and those will be paid off in 2021. And we are looking at new borrowing in the spring of 2019 to help offset some of the costs that we still need to take care of here at Pacey Island and Horace Mount. So we will be looking at that in the spring with the help of there. Our community service fund, the budget is exactly the same as last year. Our expenses have gone up a little bit, but we're maintaining that budget, and it's, we're using it for middle school sports. It has to be for the entire community. So, and middle school sports, anybody is in, in the district is invited to join our middle school sports, so we are allowed to use that in our community service fund. That should say Fund 80 on the end there. And then crossing guards, theater workers, our so much school service, food service people, the movie rentals and concessions, and then our police agents officer. And then this is a breakdown of our school-based tax levy that we are recommending. The general fund, the Fund 10 and Fund 38, those are the dollar amounts, plus the referendum debt, and the community service debt equals the $5,387,489 total school-based tax levy. That will be adjusted next week. The mill rate, it won't affect the mill rate at all of the 1026 mill rate, because there is a cushion in there, so that won't change. It's just that dollar amount may change by $8,000.
And that, I'm sorry, and that dollar amount is like $225,000 over last year, ish?
Um...
I was just looking through last year's...
Oh, were you?
And it's...
Yeah, and I will get...
It's not, it's not a big difference. I don't know the exact number, I'm sorry.
And we can go through that budget too, I have that, we're going to pull up after this, and then get the budget that will go through that. Sorry.
Nope, that's fine. And then these are just some of the assumptions, and just the bigger ticket items that were put into the 18-19 budget. If you need to, to go over any of these, I'm happy to, but they are things that we talked about at our last couple board meetings. So some of the staff that we've added, or that we have budgeted to add coming up. Our revenue assumptions, and then our fund balance. If we are at that projected deficit of $120,000, it would bring our fund balance to 19.45. But we're, we're pretty confident that we can balance the budget.
We are going to be coming next week. We're working with our insurance carriers. Don't know if we're going to go self-funded, or if we have a different carrier that we're in negotiations right now. So that 5% that we had told earlier kind of got taken back by the county health trust, but we also with our HRA, how much we spent from that. And I am very confident going in that we should continue to do our trend and do well. But then this is allowing then the district, which I appreciate, to staff our building with what we need with our kids that we have, and that's where these expenditures addings that you'll see that we're looking at.
And then this just shows our revenues by sources. The most important thing to remember is that we get most of our revenue from our state, so from our equalization aid and then our tax levy. And then our expenditures by function. Function is that last number, when you guys get those reports at the end of every month, or at the board meetings every month, that's that last number, and that tells who we're spending our money on, or our funds on. So it's going to either be instruction, which is all of our instructional staff, our aides, and then our support staff is really everybody else, including the district office, the, all the administrative staff, our secretaries, maintenance, and I'm forgetting a lot, but that gives you an idea, it's instruction and support. And then non-program would be like, like our, our transfer, or our open enrollment revenue, things like that, that are outside of support or instruction.
And all functions in the board pack and in the annual report that was sent out, and also is posted on the website, has an explanation of all the different funds, what their functions are.
And then the object is what we're spending our money on. So salaries, benefits, that's, that's going to be the bulk of what we're spending our money on. In some districts, it's higher because we don't have as much in purchase services. We have our, our transportation people in purchase services, as well as air mark our food service better. So some open cap matters in salary and fringe if they are not contracted out.
I would say in the purchase services, I would say probably 80% of that is also personnel. So we flush out about the same what we're spending on personnel, it's just we have a lot less. We used to have higher, a lot more through CISA, but it's, it's just, it's just for Rebecca.
This is an interesting slide, and again, it's old information. This was the most recent I could get off of the DPI website, but historically, we have, our per pupil spending has been much lower than the state average. So most recently, in 1617, our district was at $12,246, and the state average was $13,182. And then the same thing with our, compared to revenue. And then this is just a summary. So, you know, there's so much information buried in all of these slides, and I just wanted to give you just of, you know, salaries. This is what it was in 1718, this is what it was projected to be in 1819, then that changed, and the percent changed. So those are the big, big line items of our budget. So I just wanted to give you a place where you could go, and then if you want to dig deeper, I can give you the detail out of Skyward anytime.
And when you look at salaries and benefits, well, that's with including more people. So it's not that everybody, 5%, that's with more people, supporting people.
Oh, yes. It had, there were about 3% increases. That was about the average, and then, right, and then more people brought it up to the 5%. And then the summary of our revenue limit, state aid, just the bigger, bigger chunks that I meant talking about.
And that's neat, the open enrollment, we're up 14% up and 8% down. That's a pretty cool thing, even when we've had limits, what's going on. So there's a lot of things that are going well. Really appreciate the community support with the referendum projects, and as we continue to try and serve our students' community better and better.
Yes. I feel very blessed too, for your support and trusting me with the 27, for us with the $27 million budget, it's humbling.
That's up $6 million in the past six years. So we have really, we've grown 25%, just an overall budget to serve as we've grown and gotten bigger.
I have a question. Is this back to you on the per pupil spending?
Yes.
So this is probably a silly question, but so if, if we don't spend as much as the state average, you know, is that a good or a bad thing? Do you know what I'm asking?
It just is what it is. You know, it's, that's what's happened when those, in 1993, when we ended up with those revenue limits. It froze, it kind of froze us.
So it really has to do with numbers versus, no one's asking this question?
No, that's a great question.
So it's, I mean, are we spending less because we're... So it's, I mean, are we spending less because we're so efficient or are we spending less because?
We're spending, we're spending what we're spending. The board has, and the district has always maximized the resources we can get. So we're not spending any less, and that's pretty much probably, I'd say about eighty to ninety percent of districts that are maximizing the resources that come in, utilize those. One thing I, I will say.
My kids aren't losing out on.
No. Now, it all depends, like around suburban Milwaukee, some of those schools that, La Crosse, Chaboyans, that's where you're looking at fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars per pupil. Some of the small districts in the north are close to twenty thousand out just because of sparsity. So sometimes you have to spend more per pupil. That doesn't necessarily mean they have more, it's just economies of scale also. So there's a lot of things that work in there. What I would say is that when you look at the state, that state average, I think we're, the district's been very good stewards of resources. And I think that Maria and I in the past, as we've worked together, really realized how to maximize the aides and the, and the resources we can get from, from aid all the way to grants. I mean, we had that PEP grant, that was seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. We have the charter school grant over, and then we just got another safety grant. So we're really working on grants too to help us out.
I have a question about the, that almost, or roughly a million dollar jump in our aid this year. Is that something that will stay stable or is it hard to predict? Because if that would drop a million dollars, then all of a sudden our.
Right, right. It's depending on what we do here, but it's also very dependent on what other districts do in the state. That's why they can't set ours until October fifteenth, is because everybody is still turning in their annual report. It's based on last year's expenditures. So, you know, if we would end up with a half a million dollar surplus, that would drop our aid. I don't, you know, I don't know how much, but it would, it would significantly reduce our aid. So that's why we were happy when they came out with Fund Forty-Six, which we put twenty thousand dollars into there, because we, remember we had that, we did have surplus last year of more than the seventy thousand dollars. And we put fifty thousand dollars into Fund Seventy-Three, our postal implement benefit trust, so that we could maximize as much aid as we could get.
One thing you're also gonna see, this is a great chart for that. We saw decreasing aid as we saw decreasing through your average of schools. That's gonna be a big conversation in the next budget cycle. Especially decrease, when you're decreasing enrollment, it really hurts because you can't, everybody doesn't leave just from one class. So since we have, as you can see here, it's a three-year average, we're at twelve seventy-two, three years ago, thirteen hundred, thirteen oh-two. So as long as we see this, now next year when we look at our third Friday count, if we see our FTEs, we're gonna bring back summer school, we'll probably have more moving in. As long as we can stay stable there and we maintain the same financial plan and strategy we have, I see our aid not dropping but maintaining. A lot of it has to do with who we're serving and how we utilize our resources. And now that we have those two mechanisms, we can have a healthy fund balance, but also then allocate those funds to other things later on so that we have the ability to maximize the aid that we get from the state.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
And I think, Sean, I think it was you that asked with that last board meeting, you know, that two hundred and eighty thousand dollar deficit that we were looking at, is that a chunk that we can really buy off? And remember I had said that it was, it was gonna depend on kids?
Yeah.
And HRA, and we got the kids.
Yeah.
And now we'll see what HRA does. But historically, it's been, we've been very good, been good utilizers of that, so, or not good utilizers, but a code that you wanna look at, but it's never been a hundred percent utilization, so.
I'd be so bad in your role. I'd be in a constant state of panic.
One thing to that.
For days.
One thing to, that really, excuse me, works out for us is that we, we really try to get our, our funding and our hiring done when we can. Like we added positions for next year, last year, because we projected. It's a, it's a risk. We try to mitigate those risks so that we can, and it's paid off. The more kids we have, the more resources we have. The more resources we have, the more things that we can spend in order to invest, in order to get more services. So it's one of those things, but it's always been the, the board and the district that we've looked at, what do we need? It's gonna look at paper as a deficit, but we know that we have different angles that if push came to shove, we could really start to chip away on that. So it's a concern, but one also thing too is, we are not, we're conservative, but Maria's budgeting, we're on trends too. So we used to say, hey, we're gonna use all the HRA, now we're looking at three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand dollar deficit. The reality of it is, we're not gonna use it all, we're gonna say we're gonna use eighty. So that still gives us a little wiggle room if we're able to use sixty-seven percent. That's great. Matthew?
Yes, any questions? I flew through this, I know, so, happy questions. Now, Greg, if you think about something later, give me a call or email or.
Just go on. What, what's changing between now and next Monday? You're getting numbers back online.
The numbers are all that now, except for the final.
Oh, okay.
So, so the equalization aid changes our revenue limit, or it doesn't change our revenue limit, it'll change the taxes just a little bit. But I will, I'll give that to you next week. You'll see another one of, I'll try and help you. That, this thing that was published in the paper, we'll, we'll talk about it next week. We'll go over it pretty briefly next week, and then it'll be republished in the paper again with the final numbers. And then we'll set the levy and we'll start budgeting next year.
So what we're gonna, so if you go into, into the packet online, I'll just walk you through some quick other parts that weren't there. And there you'll see that there is a letter at the front that summarizes a lot of information. Maria talked publicly, goes more in depth about the state of our district. This is gonna be, this is our annual report also, so it's not just the financials, but it's more about what's going on with their district. And then you'll see the agenda for tonight, which we'll go back to, which has the specific numbers and amounts that we'll have a treasurer's report in the budget hearing. And then it's got last of the meetings minutes, and then it's got the timeline that Maria talked about that we're already looking towards next year. And then this is some really good information if you want to dig in deep. What does a tax levy mean? And it goes through this information more in defining terms. And then this is what Maria talked about. This is the notice of budget hearing that was published in the reporter. So this is available for you also. And then there's accounting definitions, which I had talked about earlier, if you want to get more in depth, know what these mean. And then there's a more in-depth budget detail here, that's four pages. As Maria said, if you wanna get into weeks, we can do more and more and more. So what we're gonna do now then is go back to the agenda and talk there. Now, one thing that I will, we are going to recommend, or passing the budget of the levy of five billion three hundred eighty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. There is, we are gonna give you some options, a little bit. Remember that with increased aid, the mill, our, our local levy would go down, but we have reasons why we'd wanna keep it at the same level in order to have a stable levy, pay off debt early, and then have zero or a little impact when we do get to increase our, our revenue limit as that increases. Plus, as we continue to grow, if there is an opportunity where we might need to do a little bit more building on the high school and middle school because of the surge of students coming up. So there'll be different options next week also that we will talk about, about if we want to stay where we're at, drop a little bit, or what we wanna do. So there will be some options with all those numbers. So at this time then, we would be moving on to number six.
Number six is the treasurer's report, two thousand seventeen eighteen receipts and expenditures in balance on hand.
And it's, it's a pleasure of the president's, I'll just read that since we don't currently have a treasurer.
That would be fine.
All right. Revenues, sixteen million twenty-one thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. As you can see, that's an increase of over a million dollars from two thousand seventeen. Expenditures, fifteen million nine hundred fifty thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. Once again, you can see that's an increase over last year. Cash balance on hand, so last year we went and had a surplus of seventy thousand nine hundred and three dollars and two cents, which, that money then was, was put into the Fund Forty-Eight, Fund Seventy-Three, and then also into our surplus.
This actually just went into Fund Ten.
Okay, that, but that's a surplus. We put another.
Twenty thousand on top of this into Fund Forty-Six, which is the capital improvement fund, and fifty thousand into our postal implement benefit trust.
So last year we ran a surplus of a hundred and seventy thousand, subtract a hundred thousand dollars that we got for the Elmwood property, so we were seventy thousand dollars in the plus last year.
All right, thank you. So next on the agenda is listed as budget hearing.
We jumped ahead of that. Maria had given that, all right.
Next, just consider a motion to levy the school tax in the amount of tax levy five million three hundred eighty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars for the operation of schools, full transportation bill and maintenance debts for capital outlay for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year.
Second.
All right, move in second and to adopt the school tax levy as listed. Any questions or, or discussion? Many. Hearing done, moving second in.
Questions?
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say aye. And the passage to the. All right, next on the agenda is set salaries for school board members. Recommendation is president eighteen hundred, school board members sixteen hundred, and an additional two hundred and fifty dollars for, we appointed to standing committees if needed. And the only one at this time is the facilities committee, which I believe we're all on. So it's looking for a motion to set the salaries as listed.
Second.
All right, move in second and to set salaries of school board members. Any additional questions or discussion?
Just another comment that that stays the same again for next number of years. We've, we've kept it pretty much the same, I think.
Ever since I've been here.
Yeah, so.
All right, thank you. All right. Moving second and to approve the salaries listed, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And motion carries. Ten, authorized reimbursement for board members for actual and necessary expenses when traveling in the performance of their duties. This every year. So, entertain a, entertain a motion to authorize reimbursement. Clear second.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And that motion carries. Okay. All right, next, number eleven. Authorized purchase of accident insurance for students. Again, this is a, a new event for insurance for athletes and for building trade student.
I'll make a motion.
Very good. Clear second. I'll second it. All right, moving second in for additional, for purchase of accident insurance. Any questions or further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And that motion carries. Number twelve, allow district from board action to purchase land and property throughout the year. This motion allows the board of education the ability to purchase property or land throughout the year by majority of the board, both without the need to have a special meeting of the elector.
Wasn't there a?
Yes, you're right.
Wasn't there a limit on that in the past?
We didn't have it for a year, and then it came back, and that was mostly for building trades. Currently, right now, if Chris Cardinal doesn't support or doesn't have the resources for the building trades, we have another contractor that will do it. So I don't see us utilizing this like we have in the past. I don't see, there's that property that we looked at, the Fenske property, that's in the corner, that currently, I don't, unless something drastically changes, that's probably not there, and I don't, but this is something in case there would need to be. That last time when we did look at purchasing, we had a special meeting, so that, this eliminates that. But there'd still be an open meeting, there still have to be, everything would have to follow all open meeting laws, so. That's more of an expedient thing that really hasn't been utilized in, of many years.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to allow board of education the ability to purchase property. So, and second in. Any further question or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And that motion carries. Number thirteen, direct the school board to furnish school lunches to the pupils of the district. This is a clearly resolution to continue our auto lunch program.
It's a good thing.
And I'll make that motion. All right, moving second in to furnish school lunches. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And that motion carries. New business. Any comments or consideration for the nineteen twenty annual meeting?
I just had a question. Mary, you made some reference to, there may not be future annual meetings. Is there some legislation or?
It came up last year because there's so many different ways annual meetings go. Matter of fact, just our neighbor to the south, they don't have an annual meeting. They have a report, so it isn't even considered annually. There's, there's different things going on in the substance of the annual meeting and the importance of it has changed since nineteen ninety-three and revenue limits. I remember, you know, hearing the stories from you and from Don also about, you mean you had an annual meeting, you packed a gym. Now, things have just changed because of the restrictions, limits, and things like that. So they're looking at, is that a necessity? That doesn't mean we still can't do a meeting and share information, but it's twangles things that state statute might pull up.
Has there ever been any discussion at convention about annual meeting?
Well, I've, I've never heard anything over the years.
You packed a gym for this meeting?
Yes.
What?
That, that was more a special meeting for the first edition of Friendship that didn't fly, and then, you know, later one came. That was before I was even on the board. That was the one with Betty Orm sliding her high heel on the table to get ordered. She was the board president at the time. That's been a community where we've killed a lot of people. If you're supposed to kill them, maybe one other person.
I have one question, I think it's for you, Maria. The equalized values slide, I went back to that after we were done. The North Fondleac went down twenty-one million, and Friendship went up, always ten million? What, do we know why?
Here would have a better idea than that.
What they, what they do is they, they look at construction, they look at new development, they look at many different things. The reason that you'll see like Friendship, because remember that's all laid on lakefront property. And so there's sometimes that has an impact. You look at the town of Fondleac, that's huge, that's Hyundai, that's, that's a lot of areas there. The city of Fondleac is Menards, Target, and that's pretty much stable where it is. But when there is construction, that park behind the Mazda dealership, Holiday, that also impacts our district positively because that's our, our school district. So the, there hasn't been growth other than maybe some property, some houses being sold in, in the village, but there really hasn't been any really commerce and growth in, within the village of North Fondleac per se, comparative to the rest.
Yeah, in the new additions, I think I've seen one house, there's an structural addition here.
Yeah. And they're putting that road, they weren't even selling it. I think the village is in charge of that addition now, or that subdivision of West here, so that's probably gonna start to change too. So it, it all comes down to, in Madison, they kind of take the overall picture and just throw values based on what they see as trends and what they see as, as growing, building and growing value. A lot of it has to do with, for instance, Verona. Verona, because of Epic, has seen an unbelievable growth. You're gonna see down in Racine, Cudahay, down where Foxconn is, that property value, that's still a tid yet, but that's just for Foxconn. Everything else that grows around it to support Foxconn is getting, bringing more revenue and more property value. You start to see Friendship start to maybe subdivide it or subdivisions, or if there's any, like, any things on the lake that start to develop, that could have a very positive impact on the value of. And equalized is an assessed. Equalized is. Equalize is just utilize and say, if we have five municipalities, what do the village of North Fondleac have, are they responsible for? So if you saw that screen, the village of North Fondleac is responsible for 33% of that $5-plus million. The town of Friendship is responsible for like 31% of that. Then the city of Fondleac is like 10%. And then what they do is for like, or Fondleac, so they'll take that 33% of that $5-plus million. They'll say, how many property taxpayers do we have? Let's divide it on them based on what their values of their homes and their residences are. So that's kind of how that works. So your property taxes are going to look different. Like if it says that it's a stale, increased, Friendship will probably go up the property taxes. The village, 10% down. The people who live in the village will probably see their property taxes go down. For the school district, that doesn't impact the technical colleges, what the village does. Normally, what Chuck Hornig would do is ask me after this meeting or after Friday or next week, Monday, what our levy is. And then they set theirs too. So there could be a lot of things going on. But that's how it's all figured out. So we have those five municipalities that it changes who's responsible for that pie. And then the more people that you have living or owning property, the less... So the more our property values go up and we have increased student, it means that we have dissipated responsibility. So because we get more aid. So it's kind of a give and take. And the equalized values are really only for how the state then divvies up to the different municipalities that our district serves. And then within those, that's where assessed value comes in. Because then based on that is how, like myself versus, you know, you versus Vicki versus Pete, how we will get assessed with what we have to pay of that share.
All right. Thanks for just one over on here.
Amen. And that can all change anyways too.
Any comments on the consideration for doing something different with the annual meeting for next year?
I really appreciate moving into the third Monday in October. We have so much better numbers than doing the second week in September. That was, that is like worse than nail and gel to a wall.
Well, we used to have to do it in July. Or we used to do it in July in the, I think, most districts. And there are still some, I can see once in a while that gathers in July, which is really a...
It's just a wild guess.
It really is, yeah.
There are some states that actually set their budgets before the year starts, ironically.
Any other comments or, any other comments on your new business for the annual meeting?
The next annual meeting will be in the community boardroom over at the new Friendship.
All right, seeing no other business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the annual meeting. Moving second in to adjourn, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, you may stay. Thank you, everyone.
Happy to see the reporter.